Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the City Council meeting to order for Tuesday, from Monday, November 23rd, 2020, to order. We have two public hearing this evening. If the clerk can please read public hearing number one.
Public hearing number one regarding the DSIC Downtown Schenectady Assessment District 2021 Budget.
Thank you. Public hearing number two, if the clerk could please read.
Public hearing number two regarding the Upper Union Street Business Improvement District Budget.
We have 12 items for original consideration this evening. Item one, I would like to ask for a motion to table this and bring it back to committee before the discussion. Ms. Porterfield and Mr. Kozier have additional questions that needed to be answered at the committee level. So can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Mutiveren, I'll make the motion to bring this back to committee.
Can I have a second?
Second. That was me, second.
Thank you. Do I need a...
A vote on that motion, Mr. Mutiveren?
We need a vote on that?
Yes, sir.
Yep. Ms. Michael, can you please roll call?
Okay. Mr. Kozier's absent. Porterfield?
Aye. So we'll take it back to committee.
Ms. Saluzunas?
I'm sorry, I did not hear you. We're taking this back to committee?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Parrazo's absent. Ms. Patrick?
Aye.
Mr. Palamini? Mr. Palamini?
No, can't hear you.
Mr. Mutiveren?
Yes.
Okay, and that was a yes for Mr. Palamini as well through the chat.
Okay, thank you. This item will be back in committee before the discussion. Item number two, if the clerk could please read.
Item number two for original consideration, a resolution calling for a public hearing regarding utilizing the CARES Act HUD funding, CDBG-CV-3.
Discussing committee without objection and consent. Item number three, if the clerk can please read.
Item number three for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the state to enter into a contract with the New York State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Services to secure grant funding.
Discussing committee without any objection and consent. Item number four, if the clerk can please read.
Item number four for original consideration, a resolution setting the annual fee for professional photographers at the Central Park Rose Garden.
Discussing committee without objection and consent. Item number five, if the clerk can please read.
Item number five for original consideration, a resolution appointing Kim Rainey, Richard Anticall, Chris Frarigan, Anita Wahid, Michael Burns, Austin Fisher, and Heather Peterson to the Downtown Special Assessment District and Downtown Schenectady Improvement Corporation.
Discussing committee without objection and consent. Item number six, if the clerk can please read.
Item number six for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the allocation of $70,000 in CARES Act stimulus funding to the Hamilton Hill Arts Center and authorizing of an agreement therewith.
Discussing committee without objection and consent. Item number seven, if the clerk can please read.
Item number seven for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the sale of a vacant lot, 201 Division Street.
Discussing committee without objection and consent. Item number eight, if the clerk can please read.
Item number eight for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the sale of 234 McClellan Street.
Discussing committee without objection and consent. Item number nine, if the clerk can please read.
Item number nine for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the sale of 1025 Lakeview Avenue.
Discussing committee without objection and consent. Item number 10, if the clerk can please read.
Item number 10 for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the sale of vacant lot 1202 Fourth Avenue.
Discussing committee without objection and consent. Item number 11, if the clerk can please read.
Item number 11 for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the sale of 1527 Foster Avenue.
Discussing committee without objection and consent. Item number 12, if the clerk can please read.
Item number 12 for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the issuance of revocable permit number 656 to Maxon Alco Holdings for lamppost decor that will overhang the city's right away on Harbor Way.
Discussing committee without objection and consent. If there is nothing more to come before the City Council Caucus, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We adjourn. I would like to call the City Council meeting to order from Monday, November 23rd, 2020. And I would like to call Ms. Porterfield for the prayer invocation.
Let us pray. Dear God, we ask that you will be with us tonight, Lord, in this meeting as we go forth, Lord, to do the work of the people, the work that you have assigned to our hands. God, right now, we also pray for all the people who are suffering during this pandemic, Lord, whether they're suffering physically, mentally, or financially. God, we ask that you will help them get through and give them the wherewithal to make it. And God, for those who are helping all the people, we ask that you will be with them and let them not be weary in well-doing and give them the strength to carry on. And Lord, during the season of Thanksgiving, we want to just say thank you for all the blessings that you've bestowed upon us. Thank you for the opportunity to help others. Thank you for all that you do, God, in this city and in this world. We ask that you will continue to bless us and help us to move forward and to be kind to one another because you never know what another person is going through. These are all blessings we ask in your name. Thank God. Amen.
Thank you. I would like to call Ms. Patrick to lead the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Michael, can you please complete the roll call?
Mr. Kozier's absent. Porterfield?
Here.
Ms. Saluzunas?
Here.
Ms. Parrazo's absent. Ms. Patrick?
Here.
Mr. Palamini?
Here.
Mr. Mutiveren?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearing number one regarding DSIC Downtown Schenectady Assessment District 2021 Budget. Ms. Michael, do you have any comments or submissions for this public hearing number one?
There were no submissions.
Thank you.
Sorry, there's no submissions for the public hearing.
Is there anyone in the attendance who would like to speak on behalf of the public hearing number one? Please indicate. Being none, this public hearing number one is closed. Public hearing number two regarding the Upper Union Street Business Improvement District 2021 Budget. Ms. Michael, do you have any comment that was submitted regarding this public hearing?
No, there were no submissions.
Is there anyone in the attendance who would like to speak on public hearing number two? Please indicate. Public hearing number two is closed. Thank you. Can I have an approval for the minutes for November 19th, 2020? Most?
So moved. Second?
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Communication and petition from our state clerk?
Communications presented to the City Council from Monday, November 23rd, 2020. Under official, there were none. Under general, there was a letter dated November 9th from Chad Putman addressing City Council's concern regarding allowing backyard chickens. He wrote about potential exposure to disease and bacteria and stated that to guard against that would only require proper hand washing. He addressed neighbors' complaints, workload on city staff, and groundwater contamination. There was an email from Camille Sassonowski dated November 10th expressing her concerns on allowing backyard chickens and urging council to deny the vote. There was a letter dated November 13th from Robert Careau of the Schenectady Foundation in support of backyard chickens. There was another email from Chad Putman dated November 13th on behalf of Josh Kilmer Purcell and Dr. Brent Ridge in support of backyard chickens. Then there were 11 additional emails from Catherine Winter, Jean Reaser, Stephanie McDarby, Gina Balzerano, Jeff Hotellin Jr., Fred DeRocher, Fred DeRocher Jr., Lisa Fine, Riley Hart, Frank Kopecki, Catherine Marsh Wolfram, Sharon Carter, and Erin Campana, all in support of backyard chickens. An email dated November 18th from Sharon Carter in support of CDBG3 for 11 small organizations with programming for youth in our city. An email dated November 19th from Tom Carey, president of the Schenectady United Neighborhood Association, explaining that they are seeking further information from other neighborhood associations regarding the sense they get regarding backyard chickens in their neighborhood. An email dated November 23rd from Chad Putman turning in petitions for backyard chickens and information regarding an online survey conducted regarding the backyard chickens. For petitions, there was a petition of 38 signatures received today, November 23rd, 2020, in favor of keeping poultry in the city of Schenectady. Thank you.
Thank you. Privileges of the floor related to legislative agenda. Ms. Michael, do you have any comment that was submitted regarding this agenda item?
No, there were not. Thank you.
Is there anyone in attendance who would like to speak on behalf of the legislative agenda? Please indicate. If there is none, I declare it a privileges of the floor regarding legislative agenda closed. Approval of the legislative consent agenda may have a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Privileges of the floor regarding general city business. Ms. Michael, do you have any submissions on the public regarding general city business?
No, I do not.
Is there anyone in the attendance who would like to speak on the general city business? Please indicate, and I will unmute you, and please indicate your name. Chad Putman, please go ahead.
Good afternoon, or good evening, Mayor McCarthy, City Council President, City Council members. Thank you for the opportunity to address the City Council tonight. My name is Chad Putman. I am a resident of the city of Schenectady in Woodlawn, and over the last several weeks, I've been championing and advocating with friends and neighbors and allies throughout the city of Schenectady to encourage the City Council to revise the current subjective and restrictive code in relation to backyard chickens in the city of Schenectady. I believe at this juncture, it seems that it's most appropriate at this time to, for the City Council, to come up with a compromise, and I do appreciate that Council President John Mutiveren has continued to keep this item on the agenda for discussion and ongoing follow-up, and also Council Member Lisa Parrazo with her suggestions that she proposed during the last committee meeting specific to organizing a pilot program that would allow for a compromise, recognizing that there are folks that don't feel comfortable with the idea of permitting backyard chickens or hens in the city of Schenectady, but that a limited permit pilot process is a good compromise that could be drafted and created by the City Council. We could use the NISC UNA ordinance as the template so that that won't have to be written, but it could be used as a template for a pilot program, allowing a limited number of permits for one year or two years. I believe, you know, we've certainly demonstrated through petitioning, now having turned in at least 45 petition signatures in support of revising the city code in support of backyard chickens or hens in the city of Schenectady. I have heard directly from at least three City Council members who have told me that they would vote against revising the code. Again, this is why I think it's important that a compromise be made in this situation and that we still have four other council members that can move forward with this item and move it out of committee. I, lastly, just want to, two things, address the online survey that we started this past weekend through our Facebook, social media, Urban Chicken Lovers, hashtag Schenectady. And thus far, we've had 62 individuals who completed the online survey that identified as living in the city of Schenectady. These individuals are representing 14 neighborhoods. Some of the top responding neighborhoods included Upper Union Street, Woodlawn, Stockade, Mount Pleasant, and Eastern Avenue. There was a 97% positivity rate in relation to encouraging the City Council to revise the city code to allow backyard hens as a source of nutritious food, eggs, organic fertilizer, and to help reduce food waste. 90% of the folks that responded also supported a limited permit process and offered up a variety of numbers as far as the number of permits, anywhere from 50 to 35 to 20. I did share a link to the outcome of the survey that we've had thus far with City Council, the mayor, and the city clerk this afternoon, and I hope you had a chance to look through it because it also gave folks an opportunity to identify why is it that you support or oppose backyard chickens or hens in the city of Schenectady. And some of those responses thus far have included self-sufficiency, hens, no roosters, an organic alternative to grocery store eggs, locally sourced food, to support the pilot program, to learn what happens. I think we should have the ability to make the decision for ourselves as long as we, it's a responsible decision. I have chickens, a healthy source of food for our community, why not? Environmentally friendly. I support backyard chickens, fertilizer, insect control, local eggs, self-sufficiency, fresh eggs. For all these reasons, why not? Those are just some of the comments that we've received. I also had an opportunity to table at the Schenectady Green Market yesterday in very chilly temperatures and snow flurries, but it was remarkable to have an opportunity to talk with community members and folks throughout the county. And I was approached by several individuals even beyond the city of Schenectady. It looks like there's going to be momentum for folks to get their local communities in both Glendale and Scotia to propose revised ordinances to allow for backyard hens as well. So my suggestion in closing is to strongly encourage the City Council to move forward on a compromise in relation to this request. There is momentum, and the momentum will continue to grow in the county, and I hope that if I've demonstrated anything, I plan to be persistent, polite, and successful in this endeavor. So I look forward to all of you supporting the cause. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Chad. Ronald Soriano?
Hi, everybody. Good evening. Most of you know who I am. I've sent a couple emails to the City Council, every one of you, and never heard back from you at all. So the reason why I'm calling is about the noise ordinance that states that construction, loud noises permitted to start at 6:00 a.m. and end at 9:00 p.m. in the downtown areas. This ordinance is outdated and was put into place at the time where less residents were living downtown. Residents have chosen to live in the downtown community, but the expectation is to live in a normal neighborhood and not awoken at unreasonable hours by loud construction and not to come home from work after a long day, only to hear construction until they go to sleep. Residents are doing, are serving, and the neighborhoods are thriving with reasonable noise, clean space, adequate police presence, and action the community can take to help improve our living environment. This also is applicable for hotel guests who have chosen to stay in our downtown area for business or pleasure. My request has the support of the community. A more reasonable time would be possibly 7:30 a.m. and a closed time, end time at 7:30. Please let me know if I may assist you with moving forward in this request, including any documentation that I can gather regarding the residents and other business owners that support this proposal. We are all excited as a community to see all the improvements and growth in the downtown, which may bring more residents and businesses, but hopefully with a good retention rate. Thank you for my consideration on this request.
Thank you, Ron. Jay Cooper?
Good evening. My name is Jay Cooper. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm a resident of downtown Schenectady. With the increase of residents in downtown Schenectady, green space is needed for dogs. At City Hall, there are outdated signs that request that animals be kept off of the lawn, and I'm proposing that these signs be removed or altered to allow responsible pet owners to utilize this green space. I've donated a pet waste station to the downtown area, which is currently located at the post office on J Street. Other government sites, such as the post office, permit responsible pet owners to use their green space. The post office's signage welcomes pets as long as they're picked up after, and with the altering of City Hall's signage and perhaps a pet waste station, this will prevent pet waste on city sidewalks, which has been occurring, and a more welcoming image for City Hall as more residents with pets move to downtown Schenectady. And as a side comment, there are very limited trash receptacles in downtown Schenectady, which is another likely reason for pet waste found on sidewalks and other areas. This is generally not the case for City Hall, where there are more than enough trash cans, and some of these could be relocated to prevent pet waste and other trash downtown. Thank you again for allowing me to speak and for your consideration of my request.
Thank you, Jay. There is no one else? I declare this portion closed. Miscellaneous business from my colleague? Please unmute yourself.
Mr. Palamini?
Good morning, Mr. Mutiveren.
Ms. Patrick, go ahead, please.
Hi, I just wanted to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, my colleagues on the council, as well as our residents that might be tuning in, and I hope that everybody will stay safe and follow the COVID guidelines so that we can continue to have a happy holiday season after Thanksgiving, but happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Mr. Mutiveren?
Go ahead, please.
That's Ms. Porterfield.
Ms. Karen, I'm then Ms. Porterfield.
Sorry. I too wanted to wish everyone a safe and happy, healthy Thanksgiving weekend, and just remind everyone that, you know, masks are needed, washing your hands are necessary, and please abide by the COVID guidelines because we are seeing an increased number of cases right now. And I do believe that this coming Sunday, the green market moves inside to Proctors, so another reminder for everyone. Thank you, Mr. Mutiveren, and everybody have a safe and Thanksgiving weekend.
Thank you. Ms. Porterfield?
Thank you. First, I want to remind everyone that December 1st is the last day to submit written comments for the Police Reform Initiative, and so, you know, if you have something that you want to say, something that, you know, information that you feel needs to be considered when the documentation is being put together, please make sure that you submit that information, and the email address is spdcollaborative@schenectypd.com. So December 1st, which is Tuesday, is the last day to submit any written comment. Just wanted to let folks know that the "Show Love Where You Live" initiative, which has been going on at Hamilton Hill, took a bit of a standstill while we were going through the initial parts of COVID, but now you'll see the trash cans are put out, especially on Albany Street. You'll see a nice visual, a lot of trash cans are out, and we plan to bid the rest of them out by the end of this week and to have it unveiling. And just to remind folks, we're trying to keep our whole entire community clean, so this initiative in Hamilton Hill, you'll see the trash cans, and we ask for everyone to participate by disposing of their waste, but not their household waste, but the waste in the trash cans provided for public use. And other than that, I just want to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving, enjoy your time with your family, be it virtual, whether you spend that time together, and just stay safe, and let's just continue to move forward and work our way through this, these challenging times. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor McCarthy?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to echo my colleague's words, wishing everyone a great Thanksgiving, but we're seeing an uptick in COVID cases across the country and locally, so the wearing a mask, washing your hands, practicing social distancing, it works. And we're seeing the potential for a vaccine coming up. And we're seeing, uh, the potential for a vaccine coming out. And we just need to, uh, bide our time and bear a little bit of inconvenience in doing these things so that we ourselves can stay healthy and our family and friends and our community as a whole can stay healthy and safe through the holiday season. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Mutiveren?
Go ahead, please.
I'm sorry, I just received a message asking that something be clarified. I think it was, uh, it was clear. But I'm just to say again that, um, that the Proctor, that the, excuse me, the green market will be moving inside of Proctors on December 6th. Well, there will not be any green market this weekend, Thanksgiving weekend. So I just, a message just popped up to just make sure that people were clear and not to show up downtown because they won't be there, but inside Proctors on December 6th.
Thank you. Like my colleagues, uh, I would like to take this opportunity to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Please, um, spend some quality times with your, um, family, relatives, and friends. And, and do remember when you are celebrating to practice COVID-19 safety protocol. As you go about your holiday planning and celebration, it's very important that you, you know, practice social distancing, wear your mask, and, uh, respect our, um, the protocol that is out there. They have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. May well, everyone, and good evening.
Have a nice Thanksgiving. God bless. Bye.
Happy Thanksgiving.